Good afternoon, board members, staff, members of the community. Let the record show today is September the 2nd. The time is 3:00 PM, and we will now call the Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The agenda is now approved, and Mr. Martin will lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Adams will lead us in the invocation. Please rise.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
...of the United States of America-
And to the republic-
...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear the Father, we thank you for the state you've given us, come before you to conduct the business here in Amherst County. We want to thank you for the wonderful, dedicated staff we have, and they go forth each day to make Amherst County a better place. We ask you to give the board members and staff the wisdom and the guidance through this meeting to make the best decisions for the citizens of Amherst. As always, Lord, we ask you to keep your safety and your healing hand upon our public safety and law enforcement personnel, as well as their active-duty military. Please be with us. We can proceed through this meeting, make the proper judgments as necessary. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on, we will come to citizen comment. Mr. Marks, you have signed up.
If I don't use my three minutes, can I save what I don't use?
Of course you can. It's just like a bank around here.
The next time I come, right? Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Good evening, members of the board and staff. My name is Johnny Marks, Jr., and I reside in District Number 5. When the contract for the sale of Winton was prepared, it is obvious that the drafters of the contract were concerned about the presentation of the historic manor house. For that reason, paragraph 14.8 of the contract states, and I quote, "Historic manor house. The historic manor house shall be preserved in accordance with federal requirements in partnership with the Sarah Henry Manor House Preservation Society. The manor house will be used as an events center, lodging facility, and/ or other use consistent with its historical or residential nature." Unfortunately, it's been determined by the Amherst County, excuse me, Building Inspector, that in a situation such as this, there are no federal requirements for maintaining the manor house. It is my understanding that the manor house has not been maintained very well and has fallen into some disrepair. That is unfortunate, since next year, the country celebrates the 250th birthday of our great nation. And how great it would be if the manor house, because of its historic background, could be a part of that celebration. The county will soon enter negotiation with Waukesha regarding potential changes to the Winton sale agreement. I would like to recommend that the maintenance and upkeep of the historic manor house be an item included in these negotiations to establish some specific and enforceable obligations for maintenance and preservation of the manor house before it's too late. I'd like my comments included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizen comments and move on to consent agenda. Board members, are there any questions?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Next, we come to our ordinances that are on the first reading. The first one will be ordinance number 2025-1, energy storage. Mr. Tyler Creasy.
Yes, Madam Chair, board. Good to see you all today. As you've indicated, you all are conducting a first read regarding our energy storage ordinance. A little bit of background, I would say this started almost about a year ago, from the time that we're at now. A company came to us looking to propose a energy storage facility in the county. We had no ordinance for such, so staff indicated that you would either need to go through a code change in order to have that use approved. So we started that process. The planning commission did not determine they wanted to move forward with one on their own accord. We had a joint meeting between the board and the commission back in the springtime of this year, and then you all directed the commission to take up an ordinance in June. Since then, the planning commission has worked diligently on the ordinance that is before you, as well as comprehensive plan language that we'll go over after this item. And so I'm not going to read the ordinance verbatim, word for word. However, I would like to go over some high-level requirements for energy storage facilities. So the first is that we're proposing to make this type of use a special exception, which requires the public hearing process, and it's only allowed as a special exception in our M1 industrial district. The setbacks are 75 feet from all property lines, not under common ownership. If you were to have a parcel that's common ownership or a shared internal lot line, that setback can be reduced to what our 804 section calls for, which is zero. There's actually no required setback for adjoining industrial properties. The maximum lot coverage is 20 acres under energy storage batteries, so a maximum of 20 acres can be the coverage for these sites. A maximum height of 20 feet is required. There will be required screening for all of these facilities. We've come up with two options for these types of uses. One is a double-staggered row, which you all are used to, double-staggered row of evergreen trees, or you could do a single row of evergreens with an opaque fence, and that must be on the outside, of course, so fencing in the facility. Regarding public safety, these systems will be required to have an automatic shutdown system. They will have 24/7 automatic fire detection built in, or they'll be required to. They'll have to meet all requirements of the NFPA 855, which is your fire protection requirements. We worked with the county attorney on that to include language to pretty much represent as technology advances and these codes advances, that they'll have to meet the most up-to-date code requiring NFPA 855. It's also indicated that each facility will have to receive approval from the county's fire marshal. All applicants will have to coordinate with county fire and EMS to provide materials, education, and training for their specific sites. In addition to that, they'll be required to come up with an emergency response plan. And then the last two major bullet points is regarding our comprehensive plan review. This will be required for all facilities. They'll have to go through a 15.22232 review, which pretty much puts their application up against the comprehensive plan to see if it's in conformance, and we'll go over that in the next item regarding the language specific for energy storage facilities. And then the last point is that revenue share is built into this ordinance. It's the same as our solar revenue share, which is $1,400 per megawatt, and that goes up 10% every five years. And so that gives you all, as a board, the ability to either, these facilities can be taxed with machinery and tools, which is not recommended because it's the lower end, revenue share, which is strictly by the $1,400 per megawatt, and goes up every 10% every five years, or a siding agreement, which you all have seen for solar facilities, which you all can kind of get a mix-and-match of revenue share and machinery and tools tax so that you get the most bang for your buck, is the simplest way to put it. And so that is all before you in the drafted ordinance, and there is a recommended motion to have this as a public hearing at your September 16th meeting. And at this time, do you have any questions for staff?
Board members?
Madam Chair, so, Mr. Creasy, the only question I have, and you may have just addressed that a moment ago, was the, I think there've been some discussions in the past about the geographic locations within the county. Obviously, the M1 is, that's there. But I know there've been some language before as far as the east of 29 versus the west of 29.
Yes, sir.
Is that part in the comprehensive plan and been removed from this section now? Because I don't see it anywhere in here.
Right. Yeah, that's a great question. So that language is not going to be written into our ordinance.
Okay.
So that language is written into our comprehensive plan, and the way it's written, I can just go into it. It says to promote these types of facilities east of Route 29 and 29 Business, and in areas that do not have a negative impact on adjoining property, natural resources, or Amherst County residents. So it's written that way, saying you want, when you've got companies that are looking for sites to come to, we can lead them to this, and hey, we want them east of Route 29. However, that's not to say, if you have a site west of 29 that does not have a negative impact on adjoining properties, Amherst County residents, or natural resources, you all and the commission have the flexibility to approve that use west of 29. However, the comprehensive plan language indicates that we want to see them east of 29. So it's kind of in the gray area to give you all and the planning commission a little more flexibility when hearing such cases.
I guess my question slash comment would be, would, I mean, it kind of contradicts itself in a way, right? As far as why would we even need the language in there about the east of 29?
Sure.
If it's going to be a special exception, from a perception standpoint, from a citizen's, obviously, that's not my district, but I could see from a citizen's standpoint, viewing that language could be perceived-
Right. Yeah, that's a great question, and so, or a great point. And so this is kind of a carryover from our solar comprehensive plan language, in which we indicated we wanted them east of 29.
Right.
I would say about two years ago, the commission went through an exercise where we got the location of all of AEP's transmission lines and hubs, and most of them are east of 29. So this is a carryover. That said, that can always be deleted from the comprehensive plan language to ensure we're just not having a negative impact on those things listed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martin.
Well, yeah, Mr. Creasy, as long as we're talking about the comprehensive plan, so I had a question about that, too. It says promote energy storage facilities east of 29. If the ordinance is specifically only allowing them by special use from it in the industrial district, why don't we specifically say that within the comprehensive plan?
Right. That's a great question. Staff, like I said, that would be a mishap on our end. We didn't include industrial. However, that's something we could easily put into place. And I would say, kind of going to, as I spoke to Mr. Adams's point, it was kind of a carryover from solar, in which we didn't indicate the district. Now, solar is allowed in multiple districts, and I see that. So I think it would be a great recommendation from you all if we want to include in the industrial areas in our comprehensive plan language.
Okay. Well, when we get to the comprehensive plan piece, I will make that as a recommendation.
Any other questions? I have one, Mr. Creasy. It seems to me, and I don't, you know, I don't know what I don't know when it comes to battery storage. So it seems to me we're somewhat prescriptive in describing these things, their size, is that, and the others, what, eight feet tall, not to exceed eight feet tall? Have we run this by anyone, like an association of people or subject matter experts in this? Have we run our ordinance by them, just to make sure that we haven't inadvertently shot ourselves in the foot?
We have not sent our, we have not sent our ordinance specifically to a group that does this. However, what I would say is, the companies that proposed this type of use in the county, we worked with them to come up with an ordinance, because they're in this day-to-day. We've also researched what neighboring localities, as not many have done. So we've expanded our search, and of, this ordinance that's before you was not created by just the county. We handpicked portions from a bunch of other localities and thrown it into our ordinance. So this is things that other localities have done, and so, and we've also worked with those developers, and we showed them the ordinance as we're working on it. And they say, yes, we have a very robust ordinance, but it's nothing that these developers should not be able to meet, and it seems to be something that is a benefit for the county and for them as well, especially for fire protections and things of that nature.
Thank you. Looks like you've done your due diligence. Much appreciated. All right. Board members, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to direct staff to advertise ordinance number 2025-1 for a public hearing on September 16, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right. Mr. Creasy, there's, we are, and you're also up for the next one.
Yes, ma'am. So the ordinance that you just saw, it has that 15.2 review. That's when you would review this type of special exception use, energy storage, towards your comprehensive plan, and to see if it's in compliance or with it. So as I just mentioned, the provided language, or recommended language, is to promote energy storage facilities east of Route 29 and 29 Business, and in areas that do not have a negative impact on adjoining property, natural resources, or Amherst County residents. Just to reiterate, the way it's written does not mean that if a proposal came to you west of 29, that you had, that the planning commission would have to say it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan, so long it does not have a negative impact on adjoining properties, resources, or residents. However, it is indicating that is where the county would like to see these uses, is east of Route 29. And of course Supervisor Martin brought up the point for adding language regarding the industrial district, and if that's something you all want to move forward with, that is a very easy change that staff can make. And I guess a question I would have for you, Mr. Popovich, is the, fortunately, we've already had to advertise due to the constraints with that. The ordinance indicates that it's only in the M1 district, but our comprehensive plan advertising does not. I would feel safe if they wanted to make that change, that we could still move forward with the public hearing in September?
That's correct, yes. It's not, it's not such a significant change that it would be an absolute difference of what was actually presented originally.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. All right. Moving on to item B.
You need a motion, correct?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Is there a motion for item B?
So I'd make a motion that we move it forward to the September 16th meeting for a public hearing, provided that the wording and an M1 industrial district is added.
All right. Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2025-6, inoperable motor vehicles. Sheriff Fares, could you speak to that, please?
I met with Mr. Creasy and several other folks with the county regarding the inoperable vehicle code, as it was written. It had gotten, or it was, where it was so cumbersome and repetitive, having to go back and serve notices and whatnot, and getting inoperable vehicles removed from properties throughout the county, is, my request was, what can we do to make it more expedited so that the officer doesn't have to continually go back and serve additional notices? And so the ordinance was, some written, some deleted, and we came up with, my request was to come up with one form, notice to be served on individuals when we were going to take action on an inoperable vehicle on a property, and it's basically, one form has all the verbiage on it to instruct the individuals as to what will happen. They have 10 days to abate the issue, or either get the vehicle in compliance once this notice is served on them. After that 10 days has expired, then Virginia Auto Parts would go and remove the vehicle and place it in an area that they have designated on their site off of Wright Shop Road. It would remain there five additional days, at which time the owner of the vehicle would have to communicate with them in order to retrieve the vehicle or whatever they worked out with Virginia Auto Parts. And after that five days, then Virginia Auto Parts would have the ability to apply for destruction title of whatever they needed to then destroy the vehicle. What we were looking for, as I said, when I started speaking to you all, is to streamline the process so that it wouldn't be repetitive, notices having to be served on individuals in getting these vehicles removed, abandoned or inoperable vehicles removed from properties.
Board members, any questions? Go ahead.
Sheriff, so if I have an inoperable vehicle on my property, how many days do you give me?
Once the notice is served, you get 10 days.
10 days, right. So at the end of 10 days, who verifies it is still there?
The, in 10 days, if the officer would go back and it's still there, then they would notify Virginia Auto Parts.
The officer still has to go back.
Correct. And if it's not been abated within the 10-
Then they'd notify-
-five Virginia Auto Parts to pick it up. Yep.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? Not, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I've moved the board set ordinance 2025-6 for public hearing at the October 21st, 2025 meeting.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, board.
Next, we've got old business, resolution 2024-11. Mr. Waldron, Tyler, you're up for that, and I see that Mr. Waldron is also here.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Waldron is here. And so, to refresh your memory, a public hearing was held by you all on January 21st of this year regarding the resolution to revoke Mr. Waldron's special exception for a trucking business. You all graciously tabled that request and gave Mr. Waldron ample amount of time to bring his site into compliance with the issues revolving around the resolution. Those issues talked about miscellaneous items outside, storage of unpermitted vehicles, the operation of a trucking business without having a site plan in conformance with what was approved, not having the required landscaping in place. There is a few of those, quite a few issues going on, and they can be found in the resolution. That said, Mr. Waldron has made great strides at his property. The miscellaneous items are, there's a few, but it's mostly for the maintenance of the site, for tree cutting. He's removed the old ambulances, some vans that were out there. The trucks are now parked in a spot. And the last few things that Mr. Waldron is working on are mostly his grading out there. So he's going to be contacting the individuals who put in his sediment pond. Some sediment has built up, so he needs to ensure that that is a proper grade, so it's flowing properly. But other than that, he has put in his double row of trees that can be found on the site. And I wouldn't want to bore you too much, and I'm not sure if I can get to it quick enough. I don't think I can. But if you go through there, staff's provided you pictures. I would say there are about four months in between each sets of pictures, and you can see, you can see the compliance that Mr. Waldron has been able to make. That said, he still needs some work to do in his grading in some areas, and Mr. Waldron is aware of this, and he's going to continue to work on that. However, the issues regarding his site being out of compliance with the approved special exception, staff believes he has brought that into compliance so long as he continues to maintain it.
Very good. Mr. Waldron, is there anything you'd like to come up and speak to us about? First, I'm glad you're feeling better. I'm glad you're-
Thank you.
-is good.
You're going through a few things, but it's okay. I've done my best to bring the property into compliance according to the blueprints. The only other thing that I have to do, I believe, is maybe add a little bit more riff Ralph, maybe stop the flow of some of the erosion. Other than that, everything else is down and brought into compliance.
Board members, do you have any questions? Mr. Waldron? Thank you, sir. All right, board members, is there any, any, no further questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to deny resolution 2024-11, which means-
Which means he can go forward. Yeah, that was a little confusing. I even had to call- to call Jeremy today. So, for those of you all listening to this, when Mr. Martin made the motion to deny, that's what Mr. Waldron wants. He wants the old one to be done away with, so that he can go forward with his business. So, he will be conducting business here in our county. All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Waldron. Next, we've got the Blue Ridge Railway Trail. Mr. Creasy?
Yes, Madam Chair, Board. The Board adopted the, I'll go back a little bit, adopted the 2023-2024 Strategic Plan and Action Work Plan. And part of that was directing staff to identify potential actions to protect the view shed of the Blue Ridge Railway Trail that you can see before you. This property serves as almost like a property line between Amherst County and Nelson County. As you can see, it starts at the Roses Mill Trailhead, which is up near the northern portion of the county. And it's about three to four miles that is within Amherst County, and then it exits to Nelson County down here at this southern eastern portion. It also does continue past this trailhead, but all of this is also in Nelson County up here. So, staff researched this, and we came back before you in July of last year, indicating that there is a potential to require additional setbacks for properties that front along this parcel, as well as there is, we believe, enough information there to restrict the logging of these properties. So, this was taken to the planning commission, and the planning commission talked through this. One of the things at the first meeting in April was that they did not want to limit civic culture, the logging of trees. So, they asked staff to take out that requirement. And then they also asked for a visual indicating what that 125-foot setback would look like. So, as it currently stands, properties that front along the trail, all of these would be considered the rear property line for all of these parcels, except for maybe this one up here. And so, they would have a setback of 25 feet. So, staff proposed an ordinance change to the commission to up that to 125 feet, which is also in alignment with your Route 130 overlay district, if you're familiar with that. So, that was brought back to them, and then they asked for the visual. Staff had to work with Timmins, and I don't want to complain for why it took us so long to get to you, but it took us a while to get this visual. So, it took a while to bring this visual to the commission. Once we did, the commission, I don't want to speak for each one individually, but they did have talks that they didn't want to restrict these property owners along this any more than we should, is the best way to put it. So, they asked staff, well, what is another way? Let's say they do want a river view. Is there another way that we could potentially allow them to have a structure within this setback? Because a river view's always nice. So, they instructed staff to take this back and make it a special exception. So, any structure within the 125 feet would be a special exception. When staff brought this back, we did voice concerns, because you all as the Board and them as the commission would have no standard in which to apply that special exception to. It would be, I would say, a very difficult decision for a commission member and you all as a Board for any requests of that nature. So, once staff voiced that concern, it kind of fell back to, well, we don't want to prohibit these property owners from using their land. So, they decided not to move forward with an ordinance change under their accord and voted on that 5-0. And that is what staff is bringing to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Mr. Martin, I know you had a special interest in this. Any questions from other board members?
Well, it looks like this is for information only.
Is there anything you want to suggest to staff?
Well, I don't want to lose sight of the importance of the trail. To me, it's one of the most, it's a very essential part of our recreation in the county. It's used heavily by people, not only from the county, but everywhere. So, it brings visitors in. So, while I'm not ready to throw the towel in on it yet, I understand all the concerns. I'd like for, this is just me, I would like staff to maybe look into, is there opportunities for the county to obtain additional easements? Or are there some type of incentives we could give to property owners? A history of how the trail came to be, just, you know, if you could get that information to us at a later date, just for us to consider, to see if we do want to move forward.
Yes, sir.
So, that's all, Madam Chair.
Any other questions, any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Moving on, we've got a request for grant match funding for new SRO applicants. Sheriff Fares, could you speak to that, please?
Madam Chair, Board members, as we all know, we've added quite a bit of square footage or will be once completed at the high school, right about 44,000, I think is my understanding, the total square footage upon completion. And somewhere about 1,200 students under the roofs of that existing plus additional square footage. We've had one SRO there at the high school. Now, there are two. I've moved a second officer there because of the additional square footage and the ability to cover that area. It's a lot of space up there with the new renovations. Currently, we have 10 SRO positions, nine of which are filled. I've got one vacancy. And if we put two officers at the high school, in order to keep one in all of our schools and two at the high school, we'll crowd 11. So, that is the reason that I come before you today to request the approval of this grant if we're awarded. Of course, we just have to, do the application, submit it. We should know in October if, you know, it's awarded. So, that is the reason that I am requesting this, is because of the space at the high school with one officer trying to cover that space. It's quite difficult to do that.
Thank you, Sheriff. I know that I will say that I think that every single one of our schools should always have an SRO there. I feel strongly about that with the world that we live in today. Board members, any comments?
Sheriff, what was the timeline, when you should know?
October.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed that a moment ago. But until then, you're just going to use?
Yes, I've got the second one.
Proceeds from a vacancy to be able to cover that.
When school opened at the high school, there were two there, and will be two there.
And then you're just floating one between?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martin.
Sheriff, so is October for all 11, or just this one addition?
Just this one. The cycle, this came out of last minute. This grant came out of last, so it's kind of, all the rest of the grants follow the same fiscal cycle that local governments do. But because this was evidently some funding that they came across, it kind of got tossed out there at the end. So, it's kind of off schedule with all the rest of them. But the approval on this should come in October.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that the Board approve to fund the grant match in the amount of $28,130 from the unobligated general fund balance.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Board.
Moving on, we've got a topic here, the water, the waste convenience centers expansion to have them all open seven days a week. And I know that this is something we had talked about last meeting. And I appreciate Jeremy coming back with us with some numbers. So, it would be approximately $80,000. And with that $80,000, you would add eight part-time employees, right? Four part-time employees, okay. Thank you. All right. And this isn't anything that we've got to make a decision on today. How do you all feel about opening them up seven days a week?
Madam Chair, I'll go first, because I mean, this is, several in, obviously, in my district. But myself and Mr. Bryant have talked about this many times. You and I spoke about it, because it affects both of us probably. As much as I would love to see the Foxton Buffalo open seven days a week, because that's probably one of the biggest things that I catch a little bit from the constituents up in the Awwood area. I still want to be cautious and timely in this. And I think we may, I think we will very well get there, but I think we need to make sure that when Mr. Bryant and Ms. McBride comes back with us to see what our revenues and projections are going to look like, especially for CIP stuff, that might be a better time. I'm not, as much as I would want to do it right now, I want to make sure that we do it in a timely fashion.
This conversation started out with me fussing about the fact that on a Thursday morning, when I was going to work, Wark Barn Road, right there at the entrance, was a pile of trash piled up. It hadn't been opened up yet by dogs or animals, but that was going to be the next step. And so, we got somebody to come by with one of the farm trucks and pick it up. But, you know, it's just trifling. And I had suggested maybe we could put cameras out there and say this is under surveillance. Maybe it would deter people from doing it. I don't know if it would or not. But that's how all this got started. But I am fine with waiting until we go start looking at our budget numbers before we take any action, unless somebody else feels strongly.
Madam Chair, I've always actually supported keeping the convenience centers open seven days a week. I can only imagine, I mean, obviously, I go to the Boxwood Farm facility and just trying to get there between 7:00 and 7:00 sometimes is very hard. So, I can imagine when they're closed certain days of the week. What seems odd to me is that Wark Barn, which is on the far, I guess, eastern side of the county, is getting 723 tons with it not being open. But how many days a week is that open?
Five.
Five days a week. Is that area that populated? How do we know we're not getting trash from Nelson County in that?
Well, I think the guy there does a good, come on up, Jeremy, does a good job of checking.
What does he check? I mean, there's no county stickers unless he's checking your license.
I mean, a lot of people he knows, if he doesn't know you, he'll ask you.
He checks your license.
Does he?
Most of the time. And most of the people that come in are regular, so he knows them very well.
That's a lot of trash. Okay.
It's a whole lot of trash. I mean, if you go by there on a Saturday, you got to wait in line to get to one of the dumpsters. It's a lot of trash.
Well, I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, I'll support you when the time comes to do it, because I think that at least we should be able to take care of the trash for our citizens. All right? And I've always said that. I don't know why we haven't done it before now, so.
I can tell you, when we get to this point, we're going to bring it up again, I'm going to speak strongly in favor, because as you can see, 723 tons of five days a week. And, you know, our folks down in that part of the county pay taxes just like everybody else does. And so, you know, I would like to see them have some of the same benefits that the rest of the county does. But I get off my soapbox now. Does everybody agree we're just wait till the budget? Okay, thank you. I appreciate your work on this, sir.
Well, are we waiting until next year's budget, or are we waiting until when we discuss the CIP, which is different?
I mean, me personally, I'm okay, sooner than later, right?
Yes.
When we have the discussions, what's the timeline, Mr. Bryant, now for that? I know we originally discussed we want to be talking about this in September. Is that?
So, generally, this would be in the operating budget, because it's recurring costs.
Correct.
So, CIP would not be in our CIP. The idea would be, it would be in our operating budget for, we would be debating it, you know, next winter, spring, for the July 1, starting in '26, unless you tell us different.
But at the same time, we'll have a pretty good idea when, I don't want to contradict myself as far as the two different, yeah, I understand CIP and this is operating. But we're also going to have a pretty good idea of what we're looking at when we start discussing the CIP funds, correct?
We'll know what we had left over from last year.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, but you, and then the next year will go into your operating budget.
It'll go into operating. I'm not saying we're going to pull from CIP funds to fund this project. I'm just talking about as far as forecasting going forward.
I'm not sure we'll have a, I'm sorry, Madam.
No, go ahead.
I'm not sure we'll have an idea about the budget for, which would be fiscal year '27 in a couple of weeks.
No.
There's no way. What we'll know in two weeks, or whenever the county administrator brings it back to us, is how much leftover funds we would have to spend on capital improvements, right? To me, this is, would really come out of the reserve funds, just like we just did the SRO funding. Because what we did right there is we said, we're going to create a position, right? We know it wasn't in our, this current fiscal year's operating budget, but it's important enough to us that we include it, right? And we're going to use one-time reserve funds to do that. So, to me, we either, I don't see why we wouldn't do it now versus, or you're just going to have to wait till next year and operate. So, I'm fully prepared to support this, because it needs to be done, quite frankly.
Should have been done.
It should have been done years ago, that we have citizens up there that can't take their trash to the dumpster. You know how inconvenient that is?
Yeah, I'm one of them.
Yes, yes, I do.
Yeah, I fully understand.
Well, you know, yeah.
And I'm okay with that. Again, I was just, I think we're comparing apples to oranges as far as an SRO position in convenience centers, because we are providing the service now, we're just not providing it seven days a week. So, I don't want to blur those lines. But, Mr. Martin, I'm not in opposition to this. If you guys feel strongly enough about it, hey, I'm very, yeah, it'll be more convenient for me. But as well as the rest of the citizens in the Awwood area. So, I'm okay with that as well.
All right, I'm going to move that the Board directs staff to move forward with the extension of the hours for those sites, appropriate funding, unobligated general fund balance. Motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Board. Moving on, we've got the VBRSP Grant Matching Fund for the Dillard Site. Ms. Hanson?
Good afternoon. So, I'm really pleased to say that the EDA's application for a Virginia Business Readiness Sites Program grant for the Dillard Site to actually purchase the entire site, which is, if you remember, an M1 industrial zone, 545 Greenfield acre. That's currently privately owned. It's unique in this entire region in that it's got a high-power transmission lines, which gathers a lot of interest in industrial and other areas. It also has gas, water, sewer, and a rail spur. It is rare to find this kind of land anymore in Amherst County. And we are looking to try to develop that land, so that we can bring in great investment and also jobs. So, it was an $850,000 grant, and we are asking and requesting the Board of Supervisors provide the match of $450,000, so that we can purchase this site. Currently, we have a $1.5 billion prospect that's looking at just one of the sites, the largest site, can have a million square feet. That prospect is energy-centered, and it would come with over 600 jobs if it came to fruition. We have had a lot of looks and different prospects looking at it. Additionally, we had an economic Additionally, we had an economic impact analysis done at what would the impact be to Amherst County if we had full buildout at Dillard? And it would be 1.5 billion in annual economic output. It would be $2 million annually in real estate taxes, 4,400 jobs, that includes the initial construction jobs, and 321 million annual and labor income. So this site has a great potential to bring in a lot of economic impact. And the important taxes that you all dispersed to all our different operating budgets, our emergency services, our, our sheriff's department, so many things that we need comes in off of those business and real estate taxes. It's also considered a major employment and investment prospects that get this large, called an MEI, and public ownership ensures that we have control of the project. There's been a lot of sniffing around on this site because of the high-power transmission lines. We want to make sure the, the funds that we have already expended with your help to bring it from a, a greenfield site to what's called a Tier 4 site in the tier system, which means it is ready to be developed, not graded, but ready to be developed. All the due diligence, even grading plans that are being reviewed by DEQ so that we are ready to go when a major prospect goes and takes a look at it. It's also a potential for transformational economic prosperity for our community and great jobs. Are there any questions?
I think, I see that Mr. Kilgore is here from the EDA Board. Mr. Kilgore, we'd be interested in any comments that you have on behalf of the Board.
Madam Chair, Board, uh, thank you for asking me to come up. Couple of years ago, when y'all asked me to, to join the EDA, um, you know, I, I, I felt like, maybe it was Sheriff Ayers releases folks, I felt like I'd paid my debt to society and I really was uh, ready to move on with my life. But there's a, one of the, one of the, uh, one of the percentages that hit me a while back is that 55% of the people who work in Amherst County work outside of the county. They don't have a job in the county. And one of the things that lured me back into, to joining the EDA was the opportunity to try to bring some jobs and bring some things to Amherst County so people don't have to leave, leave here to get that. Greif, excuse me, Greif, Glad Manufacturing, when they opened up, they brought, they brought the ability of some of my friends to come back and work here. And that's just a great thing, to, to be able to live and stay in your community. This site will give us the opportunity to keep people here. There's, there's no other 545-acre site in Amherst County to, to bring industrial development. This is, this is it. And in order to, to win the economic development game in South Virginia, and actually in Virginia, because we're competing with everybody in Virginia on a site like this, you gotta be in the game. This, this site will put us in the game, and that's what we're asking you to help us with. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, any comments?
So, yes.
Okay.
So this is for the purchase of the land. And I understand all the, the economic benefits of having the land and doing this. So are there any estimated costs on what it would take to make it ready for development? Road improvements, and how would those things be funded?
So there are a lot of different estimates that's been in, in the preliminary engineering report. When we started down this process, we went for the, what we would call the low-hanging fruit, which is Lot D, that's the one underneath Mitchell Bell, so to speak, and it has the million square feet. And then also Lot B, which is across the street on Dillard's site. And so those two, they have a PER. It is multi-million dollars to go ahead and develop completely. Anytime you have an industrial site, it's going to take five to 10 years to build it out. We've already started this process since 2019. But it is a, a buy, a big bite out of the apple for us to actually have control, as long as it's in private hands. They could, they could do a, a 10-year solar farm kind of purchase or option on the land, hold it into that option and never actually bring the jobs. The idea is that once we have public control, we can control the dirt, we can control what projects go in there that are going to bring the economic benefits that we want. Someone could buy it and just sit on it and continue to timber it, which is where it's being used right now. We want to bring that economic prosperity, those jobs. Now, the, the question of money is a great question. We know that there are grants out there, that's one reason why, you know, we are looking to maximize every dollar. We've been able to leverage for every $2, we have put in $1 of the EDA's operating budget and the one cent that you all have given us. We've been able to maximize those and get a lot done. We're going to continue to try to do the same thing, go after all the grant money we can. We're also seeing as we do this in phases, the first person in to the site is going to break open the site. We've talked about a couple of different options on how we might do that and who those higher-paying buyers might be. And then look, some of those funds help pay for, you know, additional water and the sewer treatment upgrades, because we are not going to be able to have those funds to do that on our own. We can get a lot done. Planning goes a long way. If you have designed a permit already for your gas extension, then companies that are really large, when you're talking in the over-billion-dollar investment, they want to see that you've got a design plan from your gas company, from your power, AEP, we've been working with them. They want to see that if they say yes today, that there is a true plan in place, which is what part of Tier 4 is, is getting, DEQ's already permitted on, on like Lot D and Lot B, those construction plans for those kind, with the, you know, because that can take a long time. So we're getting everything as close as we can, and we are going to keep pushing forward to get it closer and closer to full development, even if it's in the design phase. The, you know, to grade the entire site would not be something we would be looking to do right away, taking again, bites of the apple.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. The Board members, I'll just remind you that the grant that we got from the governor is one of the largest that we've ever received. And, you know, for one, I'm very grateful, and I know the Board is as well. I would like to suggest, I sent everybody an email today, that how we manage more grants that we can get in the future, that that's something that we talk about in our retreat. Because we need to be planning for economic success and not reacting to it. So we need to have a plan in place as to how we are going to support our EDA and what we're going to do when these things come up, rather than reacting at the last minute. And I would like to see us today be able to pass clean language out. And any concerns that we've got about where we get the money, how we get the money, what happens after that, that we address at our retreat.
Well, I don't, I mean, clean language in, in what aspect? Because as far as where we get the money from, I mean, I think we have to make that decision pretty quick.
Right, you do. But the recommended motion here is something along those lines.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make some comments and, and I have, I have thought long and hard about this and, and wavered quite a bit. And I appreciate Mr. Kilgore, which I always value his opinions. He, he's, he's a go-to for me on a regular basis to, to, to get my, my thoughts in line. My, my thing, well, I got several items I wanted to discuss. Number one, I fully support the EDA. I, I, I will never waver on that in any way, shape, or form. And I always go back to what my grandfather told me many years ago. And for those, the, you that hear that still remember him, he was, he was quite a conservative fellow. But he said, told me one time, he said, grandson, uh, son, you gotta spend money to make money. And I get that. However, at the same time, I want to make sure that we as a Board, we are prepared and in ourselves for the future as well. And what I mean by that is, I have every intention of supporting this match for this grant, every intention, and, and will fully support it. My, my thought was, do we, do we structure ourselves in some sort of repayment plan for, for the funds that we expend to support this grant? What that looks like, I don't know. And I don't know if I have enough support to be able to gain, and I'm, I'm okay if I don't. After talking to Paul in length today, um, it, it has changed my mind somewhat. But I, I just want to make sure that we continue to support the EDA. I, I do believe that this initiative is, is and, and will be a game changer for Amherst County in the future of it. My only other thing to your point, Ms. Tucker, is I, I will not support the, the language in the recommended motion as far as the second sentence, as far as where we're going to get the money from. And, and I'm going to tell you why.
Okay.
As Mr. Marks's public comment, um, statements were made in the beginning, we, we still have an open issue with Wenton Country Club. And from a perception standpoint, um, I don't think it matters at this point where we get the money from. I do not support the language of pulling the 250,000, 250,000 that Wenton Fund, because we don't know what this looks like, right? So with that being said, I, I, I will not support that language as far as the specifics, as far as where the, where the funds are going to come from.
Mr. Martin?
So it would have to come from, uh, unobligated fund, right?
Well, 200 of it, it already is.
Well, correct, so.
And all of it would.
Mr. Adams, I, I tend to agree with you about the Wenton thing. It's, it's almost like the perception.
Correct.
And, you know, in terms of repayment, uh, uh, you know, this moves forward, the EDA gets the property, is able to market it, able to develop it. I think our return is going to be in the increased tax value and, and job creation. That's our return. What my questions to Ms. Hanson were really directed at, you gave a great answer, but what I was really looking for was that in terms of infrastructure, you're going to be going out looking for further grants, you're not going to be necessarily coming back to the county and say, hey, remember that land you helped us buy? Well, now we need two, or three, four, five, six million dollars to put roads and water and sewer in, because I'm not sure we're necessarily in a position to do that right now. So I, I think we need to move forward purchasing the property. So, you know, if somebody wants to look at moving that we, how much is unobligated, unobligated fund there?
Um, so right now, yeah, we have, uh, in the unobligated general fund, we have 4.3 million.
Minus 100 and.
Correct.
Thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
And that does not include the 15% that's set aside, and it does not include the future fund. We, we have 4.9 million in the future fund. So, so including the future fund and the unobligated general fund, we have 9.3 million. Minus the things we did today.
So the other thing is, is when grant opportunities like this come along, I mean, I cannot blame you for going and getting these grants. Thank you for doing that. Sometimes we have to pivot, think very quickly on our feet, and, and move forward. So I'd move that the Board, uh, I'm sorry, did anybody have anything else?
Well, I, I guess, I guess to piggyback, Madam Chair, on what Mr. Martin, I think that was kind of one of my biggest, is the, the what-ifs. We're going to approve this, right? I, I, well, at least for me, I know where my position is. But in six months, that would-if, if, if the EDA comes back and says, hey, we need another $600,000 to, to do X, Y, Z. How, is that worth discussing now as far as how we handle the future or the what-ifs? Or we just, we handle this and, and move forward?
I think, that was my point, maybe I didn't, wasn't very articulate about it, but at our retreat, that we discussed that. Because it's definitely an item worth discussion, and we should have a plan.
So what I interpreted you to say, Madam Chair, is that at our retreat, we should possibly discuss setting aside a certain amount of funny, funny, money for grant matches moving, moving forward.
That would be one portion of it, yes. Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Adams, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Are you saying that you're okay moving forward if we take it all out of the unobligated fund?
Well, you know, and I cringe when I say this, right?
You can't have it both ways.
I know I can't have it both ways. But I, again, I will not support the language as far as the, the Wenton sale proceeds. I can't do that. So, um, I, look, I'll just, I'll move that the Board approve the $450,000 for the VBRSP grant match to the purchase of the Dillard's site. And um, I guess, based on the numbers that Mr. Bryant gave us, that we will pull the proceeds, the total proceeds from the unobligated general fund. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Mr. Martin, you good?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you, EDA.
Thank you so much for your investment in our economic future.
I thought you were looking for that. You slammed your pen down.
All right, um, county attorneys report.
I have nothing at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Pugh, anything for the planning commission?
You all saw the ordinance 2025 dash one about the comp plan update, the battery storage facility. We had a short-term tourist rental at 149 Indigo Road. That request was tabled, as well as a rezoning of A1 to R2 for the purpose of a duplex. That was tabled as well for more information. Other than that, you all have seen everything else before us.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Citizen comment? Anyone else, anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Marks, you're going to use your one minute.
I'm saving my two minutes to.
I don't know if you can carry it forward that far. All right, uh, anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing season, seeing none, we'll close. Citizen comment? Matters from the Board, Mr. Wade?
Uh, yeah, uh, one thing came up today. Uh, if you recall at the last minute, we had a member of the CBPDC here to talk about a block grant for the Madison Heights area for people struggling with, uh, you know, some rain damage, stuff like that. Infrastructure needs. Unfortunately, we found out we did not get the grant because it was not submitted in time. So just want to make you all aware of that. So we'll be addressing that with the CBPDC at a later date. But that's all I have.
Was that a surprise to everybody that wasn't submitted in time?
Yes, ma'am, it is. So.
I mean, if, if Mr. Bryant had been available at 11:58 on that evening.
Yeah, yeah.
That's PM.
More to come. Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, I, I don't know. The only, the only other thing is, I've, I've sent a message to Sheriff Ayers' chief deputy while we've been in here, but, uh, asking for, to step up the enforcement on the panhandling. I, I think they had quite a busy weekend down south, so they took advantage of the Labor Day weekend. So that's the only thing, but we can continue to, to work on that.
Mr. Pugh?
Uh, yeah, just to, just to follow up, uh, there was some code enforcement issues that I had forwarded to Tyler. And I know that's a hard job that the sheriff's deputies have to do. And I, I was unaware that that position was currently being filled or is being filled. Okay, it is filled. Okay, I, I was unaware of that. But I know that's a, talking with some of your past deputies that have did that job, I know that can be a time-consuming and hard job, and we appreciate all the work that they do. But it does play an important part, especially with trash and refuse and stuff like that, you know, to clean up the community. So we appreciate you and your deputies for doing that type of work.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, you might bring this up, but just remind everybody about the fair that starts Thursday. Runs to Sunday.
And I do have one thing, my thing is a thank you. So up Indian Creek Road, past, if y'all know where I live, all the way up Indian Creek Road to the top of the mountain, we've had instances of tractor trailers following their GPS and going up Indian Creek Road, even after it gets to the dirt road, they keep on going. And then they get stuck and they end up turning around in a, in a homeowner's yard up there, and they don't appreciate it. And, um, we, we had talked about it a little bit before, but we just made a decision, we're going to really go after it. So got Jeremy involved and got VDOT involved. Uh, all these folks wanted was a sign that said, hey, the road's going to end, not fit for commercial traffic, something along that nature. Literally, in less than a week of that conversation, there were two signs up on Indian Creek Road. So hopefully, that problem has finally been solved. Mr. Bryant, I never saw, I never saw government move that fast. Thank you. Mr. Bryant, I never saw, I never saw government move that fast. Thank you. So, that was good. There's nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Thank you, board members.